Good morning. We're calling to order the House Committee on Labor. Today is March 25, 9:30, and we are in Conference Room 309. Today, testifiers will be limited to one minute, so please keep your comments concise and brief. First on the agenda, we have H R 94 and H C R 94 related to Hawaii State Fellowship Program. First to testify, we have Bren Hashimoto, Department of Human Resources and Development.
Chair, Vice Chair, Representative. Good morning. My name is Brian Ferruto. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Human Resources Development. Full support of this program. We think it's a great idea. That said, we are asking for an amendment which would impact the state budget bill in that we need resources to do a program such as this. Yesterday, Senator Aquino had mentioned it's a hefty price tag, and really, this program like this scales accordingly. As we understand it, the idea is to take incumbent workers, who are making a pretty good living right now, and we're asking them to take a fellowship, which would have to be paid. And so that's how we came up with 25 positions and roughly $80,000 for each fellow. In addition, we need staff to run the program. So I know that the REZO is not the proper way to get the money into the budget, but if this resolution passes, we do ask for some addition into HB 300. I stand ready for questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone here? Are there any other testifiers in person or on Zoom? Is that the only testimony we got? Members, any questions? DeHurt? How will the fellowships program differ from others of the recruitment mechanisms that the state currently has in terms of efficacy?
As we understand it, so I think this came up last year, but as we understand it, it would be to essentially take those who are individuals who have already proven that they are, you know, have some adeptness in their field. And of course, the state has a lot of different areas and industries that they can get involved in and to basically train them to essentially become the next, you know, future middle management and of course, leadership for the department. Where it differs is obviously for a recruitment perspective, we're recruiting at all levels. And this program could probably be best compared to like the Haila Amua program in the Department of Labor. Haila Amua is an internship program, and of course, that's bringing in individuals who are seeking a career change or younger individuals who may be interested in, you know, being employed by the state of Hawaii. Fellow is a little bit different is you've already shown some interest. You've already shown some, you're good at what you're doing. And so this would put you in a position to learn a little bit more about your field.
And then, if you have it, I know, I know we're not there yet, but the 25 FTE, do you have a relative breakdown of what that would look like?
It would just be all fellowship positions. So they're temporary FTE. We just need someplace to basically house a body. So they're not in any, they're not listed as any, any type of position. They're not classified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to H R 175 and H C R 179 related to paid family leave. First, we have Bren Hashimoto, DeHurt, in person.
Chair, Vice Chair, Representative. Again, we are in support of this program. We do ask for an amendment to the language to add all of the other jurisdictions that are part of the state. And if, I know this is specifically for the state, but if it includes county as well, who also share the same retirement and benefits programs that we have, we're asking to include them as part of this. So that would be judiciary, DOE, and the counties.
Thank you. Next up, Yasmin Chan, Executive Director for Hawaii State Commission of the Status of Woman on Zoom.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members, member of the committee. Good morning. I stand on my written testimony requesting an amendment for the commission to be included in this working group and ask for your consideration, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Goulou Jr., Vice Chair of the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission, in support on Zoom.
Good morning, Michael Goulou Jr., Vice Chair of the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission. Pronouns he/him. We do stand in strong support of this resolution. We do as well as ask for an amendment to include a representative from the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission to ensure that the needs of our community are met as this task, if this task force is formed. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Jade Butai, Director, Department of Labor Industrial Relations. Comments in person.
Good morning, Chair Sayama, Vice Chair Lee, Representative Kong. I'm Jade Butai, Director of the Department of Labor Industrial Relations. We stand on our testimony in support. We want to be good partners on how to make sure paid family leave is positioned for success. We're willing to work together and collaborate. We've included the Risen Pel study on the prepaid healthcare in our testimony as we should listen to the voice of history on how to do this right. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next up, Osaturi, President of HSTA, in support in person. Thank you. Tina Andrade, President and CEO, Catholic Charity Hawaii, in support in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and member. I'm Betty Lou Larson, representing Catholic Charity Hawaii. We strongly support this bill because we see many struggling families. We're part of the initiative to help the Ellis families, as well as many lower income and many seniors, but particularly the workforce people. They're struggling. They really have no resources if a certain, something happens. And so this would give them that stability, and hopefully, it would also encourage them to remain in Hawaii, that there's some support if these things happen. Because we do have that big problem of people moving out of Hawaii because they just can't afford to live here. So we thank you for listening to this bill and this resolution. We hope that some good recommendations would come out of this to make the program really effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kelly Lopez, State Director for A R P in Hawaii, in support in person.
Aloha, Chair Sayama, Vice Chair Lee, and Representative Kong. On behalf of A R P's 135,000 members, we thank you for hearing this resolution and look forward to being able to work with many of the parties who have a high interest in this. As Betty indicated, our concern about having so many of Hawaii's young people leaving, partly because it's too costly, first of all, but also people shouldn't have to pick between caring for their loved ones and being able to continue to get a paycheck. And as people move, also Hawaii caregivers leave. So there won't be as many people here to take care of kupuna. And as far as the list, A R P worked to get this resolution introduced. Here that a lot of people want to be engaged. Just want to make sure, we wanted to ensure it was balanced and not too unwieldy, but are open to working with folks who have an interest in this going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Next up is Josh Wish, President and Executive Director of the Holomuva Collaborative, in person.
Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Kong. We'll stand on our testimony in support if we're available for any questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up, Michelle Bartel, President and CEO of Aloha United Way, in support on Zoom. Not present. Joel Edwards from the Wainaha County Market Incorporated, in support on Zoom. Not present. U P W, in support, in person. Christian Fern, Executive Director for UPA, in person with comments. Okay, next will be Nicole Wu, Director for H Can, in support on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Kong. As you know, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks has been working to put together a paid family leave program for Hawaii for many years. And we think that this working group is a great way for us to move closer to that, get the key stakeholders together, talk through the details, make a plan during the interim, then we can come back next session much better prepared and really make more progress. So we thank you for hearing this resolution. Please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have, are there, are there any other persons here to testify and support in person? I mean, to testify in person or on Zoom? We also have testimony from Executive Office on Aging and Support, Office of Wellness and Resilience of the Governor, in support, L R B with comments, Hawaii County Council District Two, in support, Hawaii Nurses Association, in support, the Democratic Party of Hawaii, in support, Indivisible Hawaii, in support, Hawaii Public Health Institute, in support, the Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus, in support, the Amua Alliance, in support, H G E, in support, Hawaii State A F L C I O, in support, S H R M Hawaii, with comments, Chamber of Commerce with comments, and 32 individuals in support. Members, are there any questions? Director Butai. I think we all appreciate the intent, you know, of this resolution, and I just want to note citing some of the concerns in your testimony. How will this working group or what will this working group need to do to address some of the concerns regards to the conflicts with prepaid healthcare and Hawaii family leave?
Well, if you look at what, you know, I know there's been studies in the past. There were two. And the problem that, you know, those studies, you know, they didn't, you know, consult with the department that's supposed to make this thing work. And, you know, they were using a lot of, you know, costs based on the mainland. And I think we've learned, you know, I mean, one of the, you know, biggest public works project, you know, when, you know, consultants or people make predictions about how easy or how cheap thing's gonna be done. I mean, you have to be concerned because, you know, Heart was projected to be completed by the end of this year, and it was gonna cost about 3.5 billion. Now it's close to 12 billion, and we're nowhere near close of getting it done. And if, you know, if we were to implement this, you know, this program, I mean, this is basically creating like one whole division, like UI, for Department of Labor. I mean, that's a, and that's, and without federal funds to administer a program. So, you know, we, you know, we don't want to be beset with making promises about, you know, getting things done and then, you know, without looking at the overall cost, our ability to deliver, and things that are outside of our control. Like, you know, we're supposed to create 120 positions. I mean, we have challenges filling some of our vacancies already. And, and, you know, these positions are gonna be, you know, highly specialized. I mean, where are we gonna get the 120 that has experience doing paid family leave in Hawaii? So, but, you know, we wanna, you know, when, we want to do this right. You know, when, when the paid family leave is implemented, you know, we want to, you know, be like a, you know, like a dancer moving seamlessly and effortlessly, like floating on the stage. You know, we don't want somebody trying to file a, you know, paid family leave claim and look like they're doing a, you know, need to do a science project.
All right, thanks, Director. Okay, moving on to H R 111 and H C R 115 related to the establishment of a Hawaii Workforce Excellence Award Program. First up, we have Jade Butai, Director, D L I R, in support in person.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Jade Butai for D L I R, we stand on our testimony in support. We want to make sure that young people are learning that there are many good paths to a good job. You know, there are plenty of young people right now who are prospering. They're making six figures. They have no debt, and they're wearing a tool belt. You know, lots of good jobs don't require a college degree. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. So the testimony we have, do we have any other, anybody else in person or on Zoom to testify? Members, any questions? We'll be moving on to H R 96 and H C R 100 related to adequate competency in LGBTQ+ when administering harassment and discrimination training. First up, we have Joy Badua, individual in support on Zoom. Not present. No questions for nobody present. Are there any members, is there anyone else here to testify?
Chair.
Let's start with Michael.
Michael Goulou Jr., Vice Chair of the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission. He/him pronouns. We stand in strong support of this resolution. We definitely need to have this competency and inclusion, especially when it comes to cultural sensitivities regarding the members of our community. So we encourage you to move this resolution forward. I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Then we have one individual. Is that your name? Thank you.
Yep, of course. Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, members. My name is Dionne Cantu. Today, I am testifying as an individual in support. I'm just gonna highlight how this would benefit state departments and agencies. So there are gender diverse employees and LGBT employees at the Capitol and other state departments. Passing this resolution is a step in the right direction for making sure those employees feel included and acknowledged in the workplace. Another point, by offering further inclusion, LGBTQ and culturally specific gender identity competency in the workplace, that could attract a larger pool of qualified candidates for employment at state departments and agencies. I just want to echo the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission's comments in their testimony, which didn't provide a position. They were just comments. They said, "While the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission has not yet taken a position on this particular measure, in the past, it has consistently supported similar efforts to educate members of the public about the state's laws prohibiting harassment and discrimination. Now more than ever, it is vital that the state employees and the public at large understand that sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression have been and continue to be protected categories under the state's non-discrimination laws." That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We recess for decision-making. Thank you. We will assess for decision making. We convene the House Committee on Labor for decision making. For H R 94 and H C R 98, recommendation citing current state vacancies and the efficacy of fellowship programs elsewhere is to pass as is. Members, any comments? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on H R 94, H C R 98, Chair's, Vice Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Garrett, excused. Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Rezota?
Reservation.
Reservations. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to H R 175 and H C R 179 related to paid family leave. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. I do want to add in DeHurt's recommendations to the working group and citing the testimony of a number of organizations, of other organizations that want to be included in the working group. There is a provision that the chairperson of D L I R and the working group has the discretion and flexibility to add members. So I'd recommend that all these organizations work with the chairperson moving forward, as Director Butai said, so that we can make sure that we get it right moving into the future. Members, any comments?
Vice Chair, I do. So, you know, I think as the testimony showed, there's a lot of interest in this policy as subject matter. Obviously, there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered and some maybe details that need to be ironed out. So I look forward to working with stakeholders across the state, across our agencies and departments to really flush this policy forward as, you know, I think it really would stand to benefit for the working people of Hawaii. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on H R 175, H C R 179. This would be to pass with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Oh, and noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett, any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to H R 111 and H C R 115. Word to Workforce Excellence Award Program. Recommending that we pass as is. I think it's important. Members, any comments? Okay, seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Voting on H R 111, H C R 115. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Garrett. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Seeing none. Your Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Lastly, moving on to H R 96, H C R 100 related to LGBTQ+ competency in harassment training. Recommending that we pass as is. Members, any comments? Seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on H R 96, H C R 100. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting excuse absence of Representative Garrett. Anyone voting with reservations? Anyone, reservations from Rezota? Anyone voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. This committee is adjourned.
Okay, good job.
Thanks.